Joint meeting of the Select Board and Budget Committee and also a public hearing to order at 6:31 PM for Monday, March 10th, 2025. A public hearing for a new business license for Stewart Automotive located at 214 Casco Road, MAP R-08, Lot 043. Parcel owners within 250 feet have been notified. Do we have anybody here to speak for or against that item? I have a question for Mr. Stewart. Has anything changed since your last perm was issued?
We're live.
Sorry, had you on mute, Colin. He says there's no changes since his last application. Other than that, anything else from anybody? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 6:32. We'll call the Select Board meeting to order. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, we do have Select Board members Colin Brackett and Kevin Rogers attending remotely tonight. Review of the meeting minutes from February 24th, 2025. Need a motion to accept. Any second?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion to accept the minutes from February 24th, 2025. Any questions or comments? Kevin, Colin, you all set?
Yes.
I'm good.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Kevin?
Colin.
Colin? Five zero. Before we go to public participation, I want to recommend a couple of adjustments to the agenda. I'd like to move the item number 8A, the presentation by the town manager outlining the administrative reorganization of Harbor Master duties and Marine Safety Division operations. I'm asking the board if they would do that.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Kevin?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
And I also would like to move item nine, the Town Manager Report, up to number seven. This is allowing us to clean up the agenda before we move into the budget process so that people aren't hanging around for other items.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kevin?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
Great. Five zero. So, Town Manager, presentation outlining the Harbor Master duties and Marine Safety Division.
That's the last item on my Town Manager update, so okay, Mr. Chair, I'll go through the rest of my update and then roll right into the Harbor Master update.
Sure. Okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, as I'm looking at the agenda, do we want to approve or look at number six and just knock that one out too, before we get into in-depth conversations about stuff? I don't know if anybody's in the field or the audience from Stewart Automotive.
Yeah, he's the only one that's here for that.
You want a motion to knock that out quick? They can leave and we can move on to in-depth stuff.
Go for it, yeah.
Second.
Motion and a second to move number six to right behind 8A. Is that good, Colin? Or you want to do it before?
I can do it right now.
Okay, I'm good with that. All in favor? Aye. Kevin?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of license for new business Stewart Automotive located 214 Casco Road, MAP R-08, Lot 043. Motion?
Approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the business license. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Kevin?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
Five zero. Thanks, Keith.
Sorry, Jason.
No, you're good.
Go ahead, Jason.
All right, so Town Manager's update for the transfer station, there's been a few questions coming into the clerk's counter regarding when are we going to get the RFID system in place because, as you know, the coupon books expire here at the end of April. I'm talking with VTEC, they're the company that's installing the RFID system. We expect to have that work start here by the end of March and have the system up and running by no later than mid-April. And up and running means the system's been installed, the clerks have been trained on how to enter people's information, and then folks can start coming in and getting their RFID tags. They can get them, they'll be able to get them at the transfer station or the Naples Town Office or the Casco Town Office for the Casco residents. Road postings, those went up today. Those remain in effect through the end of April, weather permitting. I'll keep the town posted on the town website and on Facebook with any changes to that as the spring thaw begins to happen. Ordinance review. So we have several ordinances going out on the warrant for this coming vote here in May. The public hearing for those ordinance changes will be on the 18th, March 18th, at 6:00 PM here in the town offices during the Planning Board's regularly scheduled meeting. Select Board's had an opportunity to review those ordinance to make any recommended changes or additions, and again, those will be reviewed during public hearing. For Town Admin, as a follow-on to the East Falls Dam removal, I've spoken with the town's attorney regarding a couple of the residents along the Crooked River that had their wells go dry after the dam was removed. In talking with the attorney, based on the information, the data they've received from TU's report and their hydrologist statement, the attorney sees that the dam removal was not the root cause of the loss of those two wells. It was more a rather a perfect alignment of circumstances. We had record low rain last year. We also had record high temps in Maine. That happened about the same time or the months following the dam removal. So those things all together likely contributed to the loss of those wells. I'm working with the town's attorney and talking with TU to see if there's anything we can do to provide any sort of financial relief for the cost those residents incurred in replacing their wells, but at the same time, I want to make sure that the town is properly represented. So I'll come to the Select Board with recommendations on how to move forward with that between, I'll have something prepared for you for the next meeting. The last item I had on my update was the Harbor Master update. Those that are in attendance and Select Board members, you should have had this in your read-ahead documents so you can see those. All right. So back in early February, for about the last year now, I've been looking at the operations of the Marine Safety Division, the Harbor Master, the scope of their work, what actually goes into it each year and what the admin, the manpower demand is for that organization. As a result of that, I made a recommendation to the Select Board, or actually, it's my decision how the internal organization administration of the town offices go, but because it was a, it does involve an ordinance, I needed to provide assurances to the Select Board that whatever reorganization I was going to come up with, that it still met the requirements of the ordinance for Marine Safety. So also in the last several weeks, there's been misinformation, and I'm not saying that in a pejorative way, it's just not fully informed information going out through various vectors on social media. I just want to establish ground truth on what this reorganization means to the town of Naples and the services they've come to expect between the Harbor Master and Marine So the basic mission for the Harbor Master is maintain records of moorings, dock permits, harbor activities, issue and renew mooring permits in accordance with local law, local and state laws, monitor compliance with shoreline zoning and environmental protection laws. Marine Safety provide marine-related responses, enforcement and education within the jurisdictional response areas. Graphically, what you'll see on the screen on the left is a snapshot of the mooring info program that we use to monitor all of our moorings to ensure that they're in the right spot and that they're registered annually. On the right-hand side, just a pictorial representation of the type of boating activity we see during our peak season. I have received a couple letters of support from both the Maine Harbor Master Association and the National Association for State Boating Laws Administration stressing the importance of having an active Marine Safety Division to make sure the waters are kept safe and the importance of having a Harbor Master actually required by state law if we manage local moorings, if we have to have a Harbor Master within our municipality. So why? Why are we changing, why the organizational change? So mooring field capacity, 2010 to 2024. In 2010, we started with about 400 moorings, and then at the end of '24, we were at 862 moorings. Last year, we issued 17 new moorings, indicating we've reached about a maintenance stage as far as our mooring fields go. There's not a lot of growth coming in our mooring fields. In the last three years, we've had just about 100 new moorings issued. The administrative workload, our current Harbor Master, typically he's working more than 20 hours during the off-season months and well over 40 during the peak season. By aligning the Harbor Master responsibilities under a current full-time position, we gain capacity and greater access to the community. Focus of responsibility, by splitting out the Harbor Master and Marine Safety Officer and Kent's Landing Management responsibilities between three employees, so two current full-time employees and a seasonal employee, which will be the Marine Safety Supervisor, we create a division of labor that balances the workload carried by one employee across three divisions. Our current Harbor Master, Sean Hebert, I do want to put out on camera at last week's training in Castine, he was recognized by the Harbor Master Association as the Harbor Master of the Year by that organization for the state of Maine. It's a pretty significant achievement. It's a testament to the foundational work that he's done here in Naples to establish the procedures on the water and to help draft the ordinances and procedures that govern those waters. Organizational changes. This outline illustrates the organization and integration of the Harbor Master responsibilities into code enforcement and establishment of a seasonal maritime safety supervisor. Additional administrative changes include management of Kent's Landing staff, which will be moving over to the Maintenance Department. Current organization, all under the Harbor Master, mooring management, Marine Safety Division management and Kent's Landing staff management. So three, three big items, definitely the summer months are the heavier months for him, but it's a big lift. So the new organization, a code enforcement officer attended training last week, has been certified as a Harbor Master, so he can fill those requirements of the Harbor Master. He will oversee mooring management and oversight of the Marine Safety, the seasonal Marine Safety Division. Marine Safety Supervisor, that'll be a seasonal hire to ensure that we have leadership among those personnel executing those Marine Safety duties between Memorial Day and Columbus Day. He'll enforce the Marine Safety ordinance and manage patrol staff and schedule that patrol staff during those operating months. Maintenance Director will assume management of Kent's Landing staff, ensure inspections are done on the facility to make sure they are maintained for residents to enjoy. This organizational change makes the standalone Harbor Master position obsolete as we roll those duties into the code office. Impacts on the organizational change for the community, no change to service requirements outlined in the municipal ordinance. Naples still has a Harbor Master and will still have a Marine Patrol Division. I know that's been a concern from a lot of residents regarding, hey, are we saying we're getting rid of the folks on the water? You know, we don't want lawlessness, lawlessness out there. So no change to that, that division and those patrols will still continue. Continue Marine Safety patrols, that'd be 40 hours a week. In the highest, you know, operating hours typically from 10:00 AM till 8:00 PM. We'll coordinate those, the hours of operation with the game ordinance to make sure that we have coverage throughout the late seven days a week. We still maintain the ability to issue violations. The violation portion of it, that's specifically in our ordinance, is a lot of the violations have been issued. It was over 130 last year. Come by way of fine and fix it. We identify someone, either missing a milfoil sticker, the registration sticker on their hull is not up to date. We write the violation, say, hey, if you come back to me in 48 hours, demonstrate that you've corrected the item, we don't move forward with the citation. It never makes its way to court and you never have to pay the, pay the fine. I think that's been very effective over the last several years because the main focus is safe and enjoyable operations on the water. For the staff impact, the additional responsibilities placed on the current staff aligned with existing job functions. As a result, the, we'll see an elevated rate of service in, for the community. Specifically, the Harbor Master, since it's, the job is co-assigned to a code enforcement officer, code enforcement officer is here four days a week, folks can walk into the office and take care of whatever they have to take care of. Won't be on the water, so you'll have a potentially greater access to the Harbor Master. All right, so fiscal impacts. Most important thing is this was, this was not a financial decision. This wasn't a budget decision. This wasn't something that the Budget Committee said, hey, we need to do this. It wasn't the Select Board saying, you need to do this. This was a look at the, the data, the staff that was available and the level of service that we're providing to the town. While the administrative reorganization, like I said, was not made as a budgetary decision, there were some budgetary savings that were byproduct to this change. Expect to see about $7,000 in savings year to year through this reorganization. That's a brief overview of the reorganization that's going to happen, the services that the town is going to receive in our compliance with the ordinance. That being said, standing by for any questions.
Any questions for the manager?
I'm all set.
Colin? Oh, there you go.
We lost them too.
I'm good, sir.
Kevin?
No questions.
Anybody from the public? Martina?
Thank you for all your work. A couple of things my takeaways from that is, so who will I call? Because for the last several years, when there was a problem on the water, I would call Sean or text Sean and he would immediately respond. So there's a new hire, yet to be named player. What, what responsibility will he or she have towards the citizens?
So you, like any citizen, if you have an issue, the full-time employee is the Harbor Master. If you have a harbor, water-related question, call the Harbor Master. If it's related specifically to a Marine Patrol issue, he'll notify them.
That's what I mean, yeah. So, because the Harbor Master, what I'm hearing is going to be Randy Thurston, who works Tuesday, no, Monday through Thursday.
Correct.
So, kind of like the question Jim always asks, what do we do the other days of the week?
So the other days of the week, when, when Randy's not here, the Marine Safety Officer's information will be available on the town website, so you can contact him directly.
Okay.
You could also have the ability to contact Dispatch and Dispatch will be able to contact them as well, or the game board.
The $7,000 presumptive savings, does that take into account departure of experienced Marine Patrol people? Whenever you have a change in management, as you know, I think, because you've had quite a turnover in your office too, so whenever you have a change in management, people leave. So does that $7,000 take into account, people leaving?
So I, I have not had any indication that people will be leaving. I anticipate that one or two may leave. I, I think that anyone that's working in the Marine Safety Division, they're committed to the mission and they appreciate everything that Sean has done, they're loyal to Sean, and I get that, but I think they're also equally loyal to the mission. If they decide they don't want to continue, then we'll have to fill those spots and absolutely that we, if we lose a large number of those patrol people, there will be some loss in efficiency for sure, but I think it will be gained within the season.
That's optimistic. So I guess, well, I appreciate that now, after all these weeks that we did get an explanation, you're going to have to forgive me because I, I'm still not buying the whole thing, but that's just my personal take on it. Because on January 28th, at that Budget Committee meeting, you presented a budget to the Budget Committee that had an intact Marine Safety Division, the way it's always been. And that budget actually had a $2,850 decrease over the previous year. And you said that day that Sean Hebert ran a tight ship. So I find it really difficult to get from there to where we are right now.
Anybody else? Seeing none. We'll move on to public participation. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on the public participation? Three minutes per resident. Go ahead.
Todd Armstrong, resident of Sabeg Oak. I just wonder if there's any update. We have a meeting this weekend and I kind of want to know what, what's your goal with the attorneys talking to Owani? Are you trying to get them to fix it?
So my goal is, as hit the last meeting, our attorneys asked specifically for a 1993 document, which was amendment to the subdivision plan because in there it stated the installation of fire ponds. And our attorney is trying, is trying to work a path forward with Owani's attorneys to demonstrate that you're responsible for this. So ultimately, my goal is that you don't pay to have it installed, the taxpayers don't have to have it installed, but Owani has, I can hold Owani accountable to have it installed. If for some reason we can't, we can't get to that point, then I need to look at other avenues for the town to install it.
For the town to install it?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else for public participation?
Does Jim go onto the microphone?
Since I left here two and a half years ago, I've only been here twice. So this is the third time I come here to speak before you. I'm here tonight to plead with the Select Board to open Town Hall five days a week. It's your responsibility to provide the taxpayers and citizens with the best amount of service possible. Since I left here two and a half years ago, there is 7.5 additional payroll in Naples. There is no reason in the world why Town Hall cannot be open five days a week for the citizens and the taxpayers and at the same time achieve your goal of employees only working four days a week. You have four people in the clerk's office, two can work on Friday, two can work on Monday, the other four can work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You now have two code enforcement officers, one can work on Monday, one can work on Friday, the two of them can work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You also have an administrator in the code office and now you have a full-time planner. Recreation has two full-time employees and I believe they are working five days a week. We have two finance directors, which we don't, this town of this size does not need two finance directors, number one. And number two, the finance office is usually not available to the public. Public doesn't go see the finance office, so it really doesn't matter. The Maintenance Department is up to four employees and what I understand, they work five days a week and they rotate of what I'm suggesting in the other departments. And you're about to hire a new town manager, so it's going to be very easy to put in their contract. It's a five-day work week. There is no reason in the world why this can't be done and it should be done over the next 30 days as we go into the summer season and as we go into the new budget process. The other thing that used to happen here is employees were cross-trained. One of the reasons this town went on a spending spree over the last two years is because two and a half years ago, we, meaning I, I was the chair of the Select Board at the KI, came up with the dumbest idea we ever did, and I am here to say it was stupid. We gave you guys a $100,000 blank check to go out and add some personnel. Over two and a half years, that turned into a half a million dollars in personnel, in benefits and in insurance. I will never, I will never support such a thing again, and I am sorry that I even suggested such a thing. Back in those days, we needed help over the summer. And that's why we needed some personnel. We also had personnel cross-trained. Back in the day, Kate, who used to be the administrative assistant for the code office, she would help out in the clerk's office when it was busy. There were times when Kate would set up a separate table and pass out dump tickets in order to push the line through effectively. That doesn't take place anymore. Also Paula, who used to be the administrative assistant to the town manager, was cross-trained in the clerk's office and would help during the summer and the busy times or when somebody was on vacation. That no longer exists anymore. So in the course of two and a half years, we've hired seven and a half people. We are no longer open on Thursday nights for the customers. We are no longer open on Saturdays except three a year. We used to be open every other Saturday, year-round. Now we're going to open three Saturdays in the entire year and we're only open four days a week. So we've raised the citizens' taxes, we've cut their services. For what? It makes absolutely no sense. So I'm here tonight to ask the Select Board to do the right thing, open Town Hall five days a week, and you can still offer all the employees a four-day work week.
Anybody else? Seeing none. I believe the only thing left on the agenda is item 8B, and that's review and vote on recommendations for the FY '26 budget.
Do you want to hear the update from Al?
Jason, you want to do Al? Was it during the budget process you wanted to do him? Want to do him first?
That's under the chair, if you want to bring, uh...
There's updated information from...
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay.
Before we talk about the budget?
Yep, go ahead.
If the number's going down, as much time as you want. If the number's going up, it gives one minute.
It's not going up. All right. So did you pass it? Did you have your package pass out or?
Uh, no. So I just took the whole number from the...
All right. I'll give you, we'll just pack it of what I'm going to go over so you can have some nice reading material tonight.
Is that the one you sent us?
That is the one the Budget Committee got.
Yeah.
I already have one out.
Do you lose it already?
I'll take it again. Thanks.
I don't know how to get it from those guys.
It's okay.
Colin should have it.
Somebody will figure that out.
Colin's got one with the Budget Committee. Kevin's in Florida, he doesn't really need one.
Be one of those AI apps.
So I do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak again this evening. I know I spoke to the Budget Committee a little bit. Some things have been adjusted and changed within this budget, so I'll go over it briefly and certainly ask any questions that you might have at the end. The first section is, and it goes by schools and/or departments. So the first section is Stevens Brook Elementary School, and I want to let you know that we have added two teachers, had to add two teachers to this department, this school next year. One is a fourth grade classroom teacher and the other is a special ed teacher in the special ed department. Numbers are growing and so that has increased that budget area sum. Most of the adjustments, salaries and benefits, as you know, those are not inexpensive. Crooked River, nothing new has been added. At the Sangalox School, we actually removed a special ed teacher, but what we're able to do is adjust the numbers, and I mentioned this at the Budget Committee, we're able to adjust the numbers so that, and we're transferring a couple of different people. So we will actually be moving a special ed instructor out of Stevens Brook and down to Sangalox, but as you see, we have added a teacher to Stevens Brook, so it's just a specialty piece, it's just a different role that they'll play. So that will work well for both schools. At the middle school, we have reduced the dean of students, even though it was a new position and it's no reflection on the person, the person's doing a great job, but as you know, budgets are tight and we need to make decisions that are not always fun to make, but we have removed the dean of students from the middle school and we have removed one of the custodial positions from the school, from the middle school. Unified sports are in two different areas at the middle school as well as the high school. We've been able to have a grant that has supported those coaches over the past few, couple of years. Those grants have gone away, but if you haven't had, ever had a chance to... Those grants have gone away, but, uh, if you haven't had, ever had a chance to see unified, uh, sports teams play, it's just amazing to watch, uh, but we certainly wanna continue to support that. So we have put those two coaches back in the budget. We did eliminate a social worker at the high school. We do have some other social workers there, but what we were able to do is this individual is actually going to be working for a private agency. That agency we are now contracting with, and they will be back in the school. It's no cost to us because the billing process they use is directly to the state and the federal government. So we actually have the same person, it just will be working for a different company. The resource officer, uh, is in the budget, uh, in the high school, and we did reduce a ed tech at the, uh, high school. We reduced a HR manager from the central office. We're going to reorganize our office and try to make ends meet that way. As I'm hearing tonight, you're dealing with some of the same things we're dealing with. Lawyers and this and that with HR pieces. So we've been able to make it work, and we're gonna try to make it work for another year. So we'll see how that goes, but that position was eliminated at the central office. We have two grounds crew people that are part-time people. But what we've been, we're doing with those grounds people is we've been actually, uh, cross-working them. So they're also doing, when, when we do substitutes, we've been using these two grounds people to try to keep them on full-time because it's very hard to have part-time people. So they've been doing, uh, custodial work and, um, some maintenance pieces and things of that nature. So what we've done is we have eliminated the substitute line, and we've put a little bit more money into that, about $10,000. So now these two people will be actually be on full-time. I think it's a great opportunity for us. Buses, uh, transportation is up. We've had, we're having to buy two new buses this year. Buses are around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars apiece for a large bus. We're having to purchase a van. Just to give you a kind of an idea of what happens to our buses, I think it was roughly four, four and a half years ago, uh, through COVID funds, I was actually able to purchase through a two-year period of time, five buses. The, the bus that has the least amount of miles on it over that four and a half years' time is now 195,000 miles. So it's just absolutely amazing, uh, I, I couldn't believe it myself. I'm going, what do you need two new buses for? You just got your five. And they go, well, uh, at least a mile is 195. So they're, they're making double runs every day, uh, so that's, uh, four runs a day. And geographically, we ha- have a pretty vast area. And our vans, uh, for special transportation, we do use them extensively. They travel all over the state, quite honestly. Special ed out-of-district placement, uh, for those of you that might not know what that is, uh, out-of-district placement is some of our more challenging kids that we just can't figure out how to service them. And it's so disruptive within the school, we have to find another place for them. This is a challenge for me. And I'll talk about monies that we were able to add to this year's budget and why it wasn't more, and one of the areas is, uh, special placement. Uh, I budgeted $850,000 this past year. We're now at 1.1 million this year. So that's unforeseen, uh, but we still need to take care of our kids. So, uh, I've increased that by another 200,000, and I'm hoping that works. So in essence, what we've done with this budget, it started out at about around 7.2, 7.3. We've got the educational side of the budget down to 5.5. We've reduced approximately $630,000 worth of positions, and we've added into this budget 1.1 million of fund balance monies to help offset the taxation piece. The challenge that we're running into, and I'm sure you are too, is property valuations. The budget is based on student population and all the pieces that go into it with the educational side, but the other piece of it is, that is very heavily based on, is property valuations. It's a three-year average. In 2021, which is the year we just dropped off, the property valuations for all of the communities, and thankfully are all about equal around property valuations, was approximately 6%. Now we have to pick up 2024. In picking up 2024, the property valuations are over 23%. So that immediately, before we ever tried to make any adjustments to the budget, increased the budget by over a million dollars. Last year, we were able to put significantly more monies into the budget, but a combination of some of our costs that I just explained to you, as well as we just had a situation at, uh, Stevens Brook with our boilers and, uh, I don't understand it all, but it's the technical part that runs the boilers and everything else, and that's about an $85,000, uh, cost repair. I mean, it's not like our home boilers, but those are expensive too, but not like our, our big boilers. So I would love to say that we could have put more fund balance monies in to support this budget. It just isn't there, and we have another budget next year that we've gotta put forward. And I think I mentioned to the budget committee, uh, we're growing. Not at the middle school or high school, cause that smaller bubble's coming through right now, but we are growing at the elementary levels. As you can see, we've added two teachers, uh, at the elementary level, one in the special ed department, one is a classroom teacher, and I'm actually anticipating adding, uh, another elementary teacher next year, the following year at Sangalox, one at Cricket River, and another one at Stevens Brook. So, um, growing is good, but it also comes with some, uh, growing pains. There are two real important dates that if I don't mention them, Sherry will not be happy. You don't wanna make her mad, it's not very big, but she can be a tyrant. Uh, May 6th at 6:00 PM in the gymnasium is the district budget meeting. And then, of course, May 20th, uh, is our actual budget validation meeting. And I believe the towns all are open from 8 to 8. And will you be voting here? Okay. I've kinda gone through it pretty quickly, and I think the part that you probably wanna know the most, and you probably shared the number with them, Jason, uh, that, uh, we worked very hard. I tried to get it as best I could, under 8%, I was not able to do that. But we were able to get, uh, the Naples portion of the budget at 8.7%, I believe it is. Would have loved to have been able to do better, but just haven't been able to, so.
There was a small difference from what you provided, um, a couple of weeks ago where we're at now. The change was about $6,000. So originally it gave me $9,353,015. And the document you just handed out, uh, comes in at $9,359,980.
See, Jim? Not, and, and that isn't, uh, that's just, the positions have changed, but the money, you know, kinda followed the position adjustments that were made. So we're, we're about in the same ballpark and a little bit less than where I, I was before, I believe.
A little bit more, $6,000.
Oh, sorry, Jim, a little more.
So the school board still has to vote on this, correct?
So it's gone to the school board preliminarily.
Right.
I think they're on board with it, but their actual vote to accept the budget, I believe, is April 6th. They'll have a, uh, March 17th, they'll have a, uh, uh, opportunity for a last review. There was some concerns, uh, for removing the dean of students at the middle school. But I have done a straw poll of the board, and they understand why we did it, where we're at. Those kinds of decisions are not fun to make, but, uh, I have to do my job fiscally and make sure that classrooms are taken care of for students and staff.
Thank you, six, thank you.
I got a couple of clarification questions. On, uh, district-wide facility services, miscellaneous, miscellaneous items have been reduced. What does that mean?
Let's see, so, trying to think what those were. They were, they were small items, uh, might demand, uh, a truck that Andy wanted, but he's gonna be able to continue patching together one of the other vehicles we have. We got lucky, and I actually, you worked for the Great Nogla Street, okay? We got lucky, we put in a vid on a very big truck, um, plow truck? Yeah, and we got that plow truck, and that was a savings for us because we took that money out of this year's budget. So that was $23,000 that I was able to remove, uh, from next year's budget. So it'd be things along that idea. And I can get you the actual specifics if you want it, but that, that's two of them.
I, I just, I'm at the schools quite a lot, and I know some of the lawnmower equipment is in pretty rough shape.
It is, yeah.
Wondering if anything was in the line to...
Yeah.
Replace some or keep patching? I know some of the lawnmowers...
We've got two new lawnmowers coming.
Good, perfect.
Yeah, and several new vacuum cleaners.
The next section up, central services, HR manager has been reduced. Has it been reduced or removed?
Removed.
Okay. And my last comment will be along the lines of what you heard from your school board members, by the sounds of it. As you know, I was a big proponent of the resource officer, and I'm happy to see it back in the budget. I didn't wanna have to go to a separate poll to vote twice on that. However, my understanding is, the way I read this, you're keeping the dean of students at the high school and removing the one at the middle school, which personally, I totally disagree with that move. I, I go to the middle school often. That guy has done one heck of a job there with, uh, discipline, number one. I'm sure it reflects on damage to the building and other things. I think that's very key. And once again, I said this last year, and I'll say it again, a lot of your kids at the high school still don't know who the dean of students is because he's just a teacher down in the bulk center, is what they tell me. They know his last name is Smith, that's all they know. So every kid at the middle school knows who the dean is. He's there every morning, directing traffic, helping them into the school, and he's part of the discipline procedure. So personally, I think there could be a flip-flop there, but I'm just one person, just wanted to throw it out there.
Yep, I, I appreciate that, I've had that concern by other people. I've actually sent job descriptions out as to what the dean of students at both places do. Dean of students at the high school has a much bigger role, uh, is very involved with the freshmen and sophomores, a lot of educational pieces as well as the data pieces. I had to look at the numbers, we've got 550, 560 kids at the high school. We'll have approximately 400 at the middle school next year. We are reducing a little bit, cause we've got a couple, a couple smaller groups coming through. As you know, we have a new assistant principal there this year. I think he's done, also done a really good job.
Agreed.
And I believe that he'll have his feet on anything a little bit better for next year, as well as the principals. This is her second year. I also think, I, I think they've all done a great job. Don't think that I took this lightly at all in making this adjustment. If you really think about it in another way, the unfunded mandate of the, uh, Main Family Medical Leave Act is $120,000, just for that, our half a percent. That's a person. It bothers me quite a lot. And again, as I said earlier, I think he's done a great job also. It wasn't done in light at all.
If there was, not that I'm an advocate to increase this budget, but if I was to add one person back in, that would be the position. One other question I saw in here, um, replacing a scoreboard, which one?
Probably gonna get it wrong, but I think it's the big one at the high school, but I'm...
The football field?
I think so, but don't quote me on it.
Good idea.
It's either that one or...
It's half lit, all the time.
I know that, maybe it's not that one, cause I, I heard him say something about doing all the lights, so maybe it's...
You never know what the score is.
No, I know they are gonna, I think they're gonna refurbish that one, and I think it might be, does baseball sound right? I, I know Paul told me, I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay. Michelle on the back, head.
I think I should be loud enough from here and not have to go to the...
I think you should come to the mic.
I think my biggest question for the board is, and I'm sure, sure you probably remember me. My face was right next to Teddy's on the front page of the paper after the board meeting last year at the school board. However, it was pushed, 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 pushed to us that didn't agree with the SRO coming out of the budget, that all was gonna be okay because we're putting in a dean at the middle school. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the SRO is still gonna be its own separate line item and not...
The SRO is in the regular budget.
Okay, amen to that. However, okay, that's, that's great, but I, I guess that's it then. I thought it was a separate line item, and I was just gonna say... I was ready to go, I'm like fuming! But the biggest thing for me was that we were removing the dean and also still having to vote on the SRO. I'm 100% with you, Teddy, I think Dean V has done a wonderful job. My kids aren't even, um, disciplined children, but they know who Dean V is. He's at their sporting events, that he's making sure that they're safe. He's there to get them off the bu, or off and out of the car in the bus in the morning. I'm happy to hear that the SRO is in the budget.
I did send out the numbers, if the, the dean was put back in the budget, it would increase the budgets. You would be at approximately 9.1%. Casco would be at approximately, and, and you're currently at 8.7. Casco would be at around 9.8 something, and Bridston would be 10.3. So, again, I, you guys wanna vote to put him back? I'll, I'll put it as a separate line item, and you can vote that way.
But can the school board choose, I mean, you make the recommendation, but the board can still choose to move that dean of students back over to the middle school from the high school? Is that correct?
No.
The cover, the cover where the one that's leaving? So no, the positions are wherever they, you have it in the budget, is where they need to stay.
Correct.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
I'd rather see the number go back in the budget and have the taxpayers say no.
To the overall budget.
If they, if that's what they wanna cut, then so be it. But I'm telling you guys, you, I know you don't go up to the school anymore, but huge difference at that middle school.
Really?
Huge.
Oh, he's good, there's no question about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we move on to vote on budget recommendations for the FY26 budget.
All right, so I just got a quick overview slide, um, went through this with the, uh, budget committee. Right now, we're looking at projected mill rate of 9.48, that's an 18 cent increase over last year. Municipal, for the municipal budget, the, I had proposed a 1.4% increase, which is about $88,000, which accounted for essentially the increase in medical costs, uh, with savings in other areas. For the budget committee, it proposed a 1.1% decrease, which is the budget you have before you tonight. That was achieved through making minor decreases in several areas of the budget, plus applying 156,000 and some change out of the, um, unassigned fund balance, commonly referred to as the general fund, uh, to pay for capital improvements. The school budget, uh, as we just briefed, there was, uh, it did go up 8.7%. I've already adjusted those numbers, so you'll see that when we go through to vote, so you can vote on the, uh, the minor increase there. In, uh, '23, uh, we did see a temp, a temporary reprieve in the school budget costs. That was through the application of some surplus funds to the school budget. 2024, uh, the budget went back up to, and rose above the 2022, uh, school budget costs. This year, we're looking, like I said, about an 8.7% increase, which is about $634,000. The county budget, so the county, while the county budget went up in previous, when I submitted the draft budget back in December, there was a, it included additional, it's about $100,000. This was a special assessment that the town had to pay when the county moved from a calendar year budget to a fiscal year budget. And when they did that, there was, there was a six-month gap there that had to be accounted for. So basically, instead of a 12-month tax year, you looked at an 18-month. So that assessment has, uh, expired, so I, we adjusted that during the budget process. So even though the county budget increased, um, this year, because I was able to remove that $100,000 assessment, we actually saw a $3,515 decrease over last year's budget. In the bottom right-hand corner of the, uh, little spreadsheet snippet you got there at the bottom of the slide, you'll see that, um, the municipal budget, uh, the proposed budget you have before you goes down by $76,000 over last year. The, uh, school budget, as mentioned, goes up $634,000, and the county budget goes down, uh, $3,515. The graph in the upper right-hand corner shows the, uh, five-year trend of the budget. For, top line is the school budget, middle line is the municipal budget, and the bottom line is the county budget. I wanted to call out specifically the healthcare costs this year, went up 17% with our provider. We did shop around to look at other insurance providers, and everyone else was, uh, more expensive than what we're currently paying. So we elected to stay with what we have. We are working with another, uh, broker, our finance director has reached out to them, and over the next year, we'll be looking at other options. And over the next year, we'll be looking at other options to see if we can decrease those healthcare costs. All right, so now we're at the budget. This is just a checklist. What we're gonna be going through is we vote on each section. The first section there, Mr. Chair, is section five, which is capital reserves, which we have a total number for this year of $376,975, budget committee recommends. No, we'll go through each section one by one.
We'll go through it right now.
Each section.
Okay, so we'll have budget committee vote first?
No, they already voted. So budget committee votes.
You've already done every one of these?
Yes.
Except for later on, you're gonna try to separate out the five of them?
That's right. That's what I'm gonna say. If you guys do, if you move those out.
So, question is, why the difference? Town manager recommendation was 448.8. Budget committee recommends 376, 975. I have it in front of me. Everybody else does not. So what's the reductions?
The primary, the principal reduction there for capital reserves was reducing the amount that was, we were putting into the fire EMS vehicles. We reduced that amount. The total amount that's gonna be in that account after, assuming this year's budget passes, will be about $250,000. Recommendation moving forward, instead of saving to buy a depreciating asset, using Andrew Skoggan and the lease purchase program, that will lower the amount that we have to have in the account and we can pay for that. When we do decide to buy one of those vehicles through that lease purchase program, we can structure those payments over whatever term we want. It could be 10 years, it could be 20 years. Take a fire truck or ambulance, that's the nearest one. Usually get about 10 years out of an ambulance. So we wouldn't want a budget beyond, we wouldn't want to have a lease agreement, lease purchase agreement that went beyond 10 years. So if you structure that at nine years, then you got your payment somewhere around the $60,000 mark and we can pay for that out of that capital reserve account.
So, just one more question for technicality and then we'll move on because it makes a difference on a lot of these. I believe what the select board is gonna have a choice of is either following the budget committee recommendation or the proposed town manager recommendation. On the very first page of the very first one that we're talking about, the town manager proposed, town manager proposed was $415,000. But on the second page, where we have a choice, it went up to $448,800. Why the difference? Difference of about $40,000.
Oh, some.
$43,800 to be exact.
Well, 376, 975, what you're voting on. So when we went through the budget, my recommendation moving forward is when we went through the budget process, when we came out of that, I felt that I could still meet the needs of the town with the budget that the budget committee voted on. So I don't see a need in any of these categories to revert back to what I proposed.
That's, that's his original proposal.
To us.
To us. He never adjusted his as we adjusted going down.
So are you following me, Jim, on, on the second page of what you have in front of you?
Yep.
His recommendation was 448.8, but on the front page, it says 415.
It wasn't a typo. So the way that I have to do in Excel is I, I don't copy the formula over. The only thing you're seeing on the sheet, the only numbers that changed is we changed it through the budget committee, was the number in the green column, which is the budget committee recommendation. As I made the changes on the subsequent pages, those didn't translate over to the summary sheet that you're seeing. So I would ask you, just pay attention to the budget committee column that was voted on.
Okay, so out of the categories that you have up here, which one is the budget committee gonna try to make a change to?
No, this is, what you're seeing up here on the screen is what the budget committee voted on and approved coming out of.
But aren't you gonna pull that fiber out of one of these?
So, no.
Is that separate?
So that vote, that vote failed during the budget committee meeting. What we're gonna ask the select board to do is on the warrant, the separate warrant article, does the town want to invest in municipal fiber? Should that warrant article fail, then we would not expend those funds in the budget.
So as you know, my wheels are always turning and trying to make this process easier. So why don't we just, I mean, the staff's happy with the budget committee recommendations. The budget committee's happy. Let's just approve the whole list and be done with one vote.
So moved.
He woke up again.
Got a motion from Colin to approve all the items on the screen.
If we remove it, can we not remove that other one?
I can't see the screen.
It's a separate article, so it isn't gonna matter.
Yeah, so the numbers you see on the screen include the municipal fiber.
Couldn't they remove it if they wanted to remove it though? Or no?
The, the budget committee could absolutely choose to amend.
The select.
Sorry. Could ask me to make that motion and vote on that.
Or they could do a separate.
They could do any of them. They could do anything they want with the budget.
Those, those are your options, just so you know. You could take it out or you could just do a blanket approval and do a separate article.
That's what I want to do.
Okay.
Can we have a motion for that from Colin? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
I will say, I would do it for all except the intergovernmental because we did just get the updated number.
That's what I was asking you and you didn't answer the question. Amended, Colin, amended.
Oh, sorry. I did not fully understand your question. I did update this slide. So what you see for intergovernmental at $10,145,046, that does represent the change that this superintendent just briefed. I changed that as you were talking. So the numbers you see on the screen reflect that change.
I'm making a motion to approve the budget categories five through 89, leaving out 90, which is other intergovernmental.
Second.
Now, just for the procedure, Colin, you need to remove your first motion if you're gonna do that.
So moved.
Billy?
Second.
Okay. Now Colin's motion is to approve, what were the numbers again? Five through?
Five through 89, leaving out 90.
Leaving out 90.
Plus, not numbered, but also approving funds captured through TIF.
90 is your school.
90 is the school.
90 is the school.
He updated the number tonight. Now, we certainly can approve your five through 89 and then we can approve 90 if you want to.
But 90 is your county and 90 is your school and education.
Oh, sorry, not 90. Sorry.
No, he's right. That's intergovernmental. He needs to approve it at the new number that's up in the warrant on the sheet.
Yeah, and that's what he just said.
That's what he said.
That's what Colin said.
Yeah.
The numbers that are presented through intergovernmental, that's what he's going for. Is that correct, Colin?
Yep. I know what I'm voting for.
So his motion is to approve numbers five through 90 based on the budget committee's recommendation. I need a second.
Second, I already need a second.
Billy seconded. Any questions? Kevin, you still there?
I just want to point out that I see, you know, the marine safety budget is down and I understand why that is with the harbor master and all that. I want to point out that in the future, this isn't gonna be the trend for that department. That, that department needs more attention than any department we have. It is, the lakes are the major revenue source for the lakes region, for Naples. And we need to make sure that we are on top of preventing accidents and we're there for when there are accidents. And we need, we need to take this department serious. And I know we have other things going on with it administrative-wise, but budgetary-wise, but we are, we're gonna need a new boat eventually. And those of you that scoff at a $100,000 boat are obviously out of touch with the value of boats. So if, because of our budget increase from the school budget, you know, I support all of this. I'm gonna point out that in the future, we, the, at least the marine safety budget is, it's gotta, you need to take it serious next year for future development.
Yeah, and there, there is still a capital reserve fund, roughly about $75,000 for a boat. And we could actually procure that through the lease purchase program as well, so that's more than enough to purchase an appropriate boat for that department.
That's just part of it. I thought, that's great. Yep.
Jim, go ahead.
Kevin, just so you know, the budget committee did talk about this and we did not touch the salary line as far as the number of people we have in the patrol payroll or, or the game warden, the second game warden. So there was, there was no cuts into the presence on the water. We, we agree with you. In the budget was a $200,000 boat, not a $100,000 boat. And the town manager made us aware of the lease to purchase plan, so there will be enough money to replace that boat when the time comes.
Yeah, that, that lease purchase program was really helpful.
Yep.
I, I just know, I assume most of you have all seen that there's a $450,000 ski boat out there, you know, it's like, so it's, it's all proportionate.
Yep.
Anything else from the select board?
So I just, just for complete transparency.
You still talking?
Yes, I am. For complete transparency, you guys haven't seen, the budget committee did not vote unanimously on our recommendations. I voted against administration, clerk's office, what was the other one? Oh, and, no, and fire. I voted against three.
Error.
Because if town hall is open five days a week, I don't have a problem with this budget. If town hall is not open five days a week, I will be making recommendations at the town meeting to cut those three departments. So I just want everyone to know, that's where I'm at. Because you can't see that, you're not seeing that in front of your doctor.
And you certainly can make a recommendation at town meeting to reduce, but we know we can't ask to add, so.
Correct. Yep. All set.
All right. Select board, vote. Item five through 90, based on budget committee recommendation. All in favor? Aye. Colin?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Five zero. Now, do I have a motion to do a separate warrant article for Sevago Fiber?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
You can't motion and second. I didn't, he did. Oh. Sounds like the same boys.
No, it was him.
What line is that currently in?
So it's, right now it's in capital improvements and is it TIF?
8XXX.
That's number six? Or is it eight?
Eight is TIF'd. So it would be under eight, which is TIF-funded projects, and be under six capital improvements.
11XXX and 18XX.
Total number is what?
Two, one second. Came out to $220,892.
220, 892?
Yes.
So the, so the motion.
Sorry?
If I could ask for an amended motion is to pull from account six and eight, line six and eight, for the Sevago Fiber optics of $220,892 for a separate article at town meeting.
So moved. Jason, isn't it two numbers?
I asked for the total.
That's the combined number.
That's 220 is the combined.
Are you seconding that motion?
Aye.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor? Oops, sorry, who's that?
Kevin had a question.
Kevin?
It doesn't matter. No questions, irrelevant to.
You matter, buddy. Don't worry. Got you.
Thanks, man. I appreciate that.
All in favor? Aye. Kevin?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
Five zero. Now the budget committee has to do the same? Is that correct?
No, you said the warrant. You said that warrant.
You're not gonna agree or disagree with us?
No.
Okay.
But you, I mean, the select board can only. Well, no, no, hold on. No, the warrant, the warrant has to show the recommendation of the budget. Any expenditure has to show the recommendation of the budget committee.
Yeah. We're, if I, if I can, if I can just say, that decision doesn't affect the final number on the budget. You did vote to approve that section. All I'm doing is pulling out those two numbers, so the, the final budget will be the same. You approved through your vote on TIF and capital improvements for that expenditure, so I'm presenting it just as a separate warrant article.
So it's not gonna show a recommendation from either body on that warrant?
It will show the recommendation of the select board. If, if the budget committee, if you want to make it cleaner, so it's more, it's easier for the residents, this is budget committee.
All, all of our articles that involve money is supposed to show both of them.
I mean, and they can show it still because we already voted on it.
Right.
So you can still show what we voted on it as a budget committee. We don't need to vote on it again. That's what I'm saying.
I, I'll still include budget committee recommendations.
We've already approved it from the numbers. It didn't get rescinded, so.
I'm making a motion to move to executive session pursuant to.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hold on.
Time out. Time out.
Second.
Time out. We'll move on to number 10 for other businesses. Is there any other business to be brought before the select board tonight?
Did you guys do the, did they have to do the funds captured through TIF?
You are correct. I thought Colin mentioned that in his vote, but.
I think it just went through 90, right?
Yeah.
It went through 90.
So funds captured through TIF, if I can get the select board to get a vote on that recommending $485,000 for funds captured through TIF.
So moved. Those are my original motion. That's what I thought.
I think you're right. And I think you got it next.
Second.
Motion and a second, twice. Motion by Colin, second by Stephen. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Kevin?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
Five zero. Now we can move on to number 10, other business. Is there any other business? You're very talkative tonight.
That's why I only come once a year. Superintendent of schools pointed out something tonight and I pointed it out at the last meeting. When you and I were on the board and we went through the reval, we, the assessors, O'Donnell Associates, agreed that we would not wait 10 years to do another reval and capture new properties, that they would do what was called a rolling assessment. Remember that? They're not doing that. And the superintendent had pointed out tonight where the town in Naples got nailed because the state valued the town in Naples at X. And therefore, our school funding formula went down and the taxpayers are having to pay more. So the state is recognizing that the town in Naples is valued more than it used to be. Our assessors, properties are being sold and the assessors are not capturing the new value. And you remember them. We went up and down, we went for hours.
My boss was there too, when?
And.
When that started.
Well, it started, but I wasn't in there, the final part of it.
So I would just suggest, because part of this budget could be capturing additional revenue, if you hold their feet to the fire and have them start making some rolling assessments on the sales. If something is, is on our books for 300 and it sells for 500, that property should be increased. Maybe all the way to 500, but it should be increased.
Today's value.
Today's value. And they're not doing that.
So.
So all I'm suggesting, I don't want you to debate this.
No, I'm not debating.
Just put it on an agenda for a meeting and have them show up.
I'm not debating. I wrote it over here. I'll reach out to John O'Donnell and I'll have him come present on how, how they do their assessing and how they're applying rolling assessments to the town of Naples. So I'll put that on the agenda.
Next meeting would be great.
I'll, I'll see if he's available.
While we go and finalize everything.
Yeah, because you get till August to set the tax rate.
So the, the, the general public is to put things on the agenda?
Well, the chairman, the chairman is asking to put it on the agenda.
I just asked. I didn't put it on the agenda. I'll come down here to Florida and you and I will have work.
There's a better for you, honey.
Seeing no other business. Now Colin, make your motion to move to executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA 4056A for a personnel matter.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? None.